Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Norby?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Wong, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
All right. We have some presentations tonight. The first one is a proclamation for making Paul Anderson Day. So proclamation this Thursday, December 21st, as Paul Anderson Day in the city of North St. Paul. Whereas Paul Anderson was an esteemed resident of North St. Paul for many years. Whereas Paul Anderson impacted countless numbers of youth throughout his career in education spanning 35 years. Whereas Paul met his future wife lifeguarding at Silver Lake. They were married in 1960 and raised their three sons. Paul Anderson was a man of many talents and interests, including singing in the Dale Warland Singers and traveling the globe with his family. Whereas Paul Anderson was civic minded and shared his service with the people of North St. Paul as a council member from 2006 to 2009. Whereas Paul Anderson's service to the city of North St. Paul included work with the Planning Commission, North St. Paul Design and Historical Review Commission, and the Ramsey County League of Local Governments. Whereas Paul Anderson served as member and curator of the North St. Paul Historical Society since its inception. Whereas Paul Anderson served as host of North St. Paul Notes Community Cable Television Production, where he interviewed many students and area leaders and volunteers. Whereas thanks to the efforts of the commitments of Paul Anderson, the history of North St. Paul is preserved and chronicled for future generations to enjoy and learn from. Whereas Paul Anderson leaves behind a lasting legacy of service to the city of North St. Paul and the North St. Paul Historical Society. Whereas the city of North St. Paul will fly all city flags at half-staff in honor of Paul Anderson on Thursday, December 21st, 2023.
I, John Mungy, Mayor of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 21st, as Paul Anderson Day in the city of North St. Paul. And God bless him, and he was a gift to our community, and that's actually his funeral that day. So it's a good way to send him out. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next presentation is the Holiday Lights Award. Hey, Brett.
All right. Thank you. The Business Association, probably four years ago, we kind of came together and decided we were going to start a Holiday Lights contest to kind of get some of the residents in North St. Paul to spruce up their houses a little bit. And each year, since we started doing this, the contest has grown. This year, we had our largest number of entries ever, including a lot of first-time entries, which was pretty, pretty cool to see. And this year, the judging was tough because there was not really a clear-cut winner. So we had a lot of very good entries as well. However, we did, we were able to come up with some winners. And first place, a $200 prize from the Business Association, Rachel Wells, at 2529 15th Avenue.
Nice.
And then, first time ever, we had a tie for second place. Like I said, the entries were that good. So tie for second place was split between Janine Baltis at 2833 Lake Boulevard and Jeff and Peggy Ardner at 2866 McKnight. So again, Business Association, we want to thank everybody that participated in the Lights Contest. And there's still some time to go out and drive past these winners' houses and check them out.
Excellent.
Thanks for taking that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a lot of fun. I drove around and was able to see him. So thank you.
All right. Next up, we got the consent agenda. December 5th, 2023, City Council Workshop. Item B, December 5th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $1,577,257.45. HRA claims of $1,061.23. EDA claims of $181.16. Approved Personnel Policy Update, sick leave and earned sick and safe time. Resolution approving an amendment to the park rental policy. Item H, 2023 Annual Review of Attendance of Boards and Commission Members. Item I, appointments to the Arts and Culture Commission. Item J, appointment to the Planning Commission. Item K, appointment to the Park and Rec Commission. Item L, Stormwater Maintenance Agreement for the future Taco Bell site. Item M, resolution to approve the Market Street Commons Preliminary Platte. Item N, building permit report for November of 2023. Item O, resolution accepting donations for November of 2023. And item P, the Burwell Property Conveyance.
Thank you very much. Anybody on the council like to pull any?
I'd like to pull item P, please.
P? Okay. Thank you. P will be moved down to City Business Action Items. Any, anybody else? We good? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. David, Mr. Nelson. Three minutes, if you could come up and state your name and dress, I'd appreciate it. Well, the clock doesn't start till you hit the mic. How was that?
I'd like to talk about snow blower safety. I had a close friend when we moved here. Was plugged. He tried to work it out with a handle, but there was a stick in there. He reached in, took his thumb and his finger right off. And this is before I learned about WD-40, but you want the fogging one, the big blast. The other one just shoots a stream out and it runs down. You got more waste. This, it spreads it out, goes through the chute, and down below where it's rusted and that, it will seal it so it doesn't ice up and clog on you. It's the nicest stuff there is. And I was mechanic for Chevrolet for 42 and a half years. And I run into this. It's called mechanics in the bottle. If you've got a snow blower, lawnmower, boat motor, snowmobile that's been sitting, had some gas in there that is not running too well, mix this in it, and it will work. Compared to me, that's the smallest mechanic you ever find. But no, it, it does work. My cousin had a snow blower, and she hasn't used it for two years. I put that in. Within an hour and a half, it was back running normal. And both these items are only sold at Home Depot. I checked Menards, I checked some of the hardware stores, but they're the only ones that handle these two items. So it's a cheap overhaul for your lawnmower, your snow blower, if it's been sitting, but you use the gas that does not have ethanol in it. And it's also like, oh, what do they call it? Where it preserves it a little bit.
Stabilizer?
Stabilizer, yes. So.
Good information.
But this is what you want to, want to use. But the fogging one, the other one, you're wasting a lot, and you're throwing it on the ground. We don't want to be polluting the ground.
When I was a kid, it was Pam cooking oil we used to spray inside the chutes to keep them from sticking.
Yeah. In my case, it was a bigger shovel. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, David.
Mr. Schmal.
John Schmal, it works.
I know. We tuned it up. It's like Christmas morning, isn't it?
2750 Chisholm Avenue. What a surprise.
Yeah, John, you're glowing. You are glowing.
We would have turned it up years ago.
Anyway, first of all, multi-things. The Alexis Nexus Crime Report is not working again. It must, has been at least the fifth time that I've opened it up, and there's only maple wood. I brought it up with the office here, and they said they'd take care of it. It's been a week. But I just don't know why they pick on us, that they don't want to have us, our crime reports. The other thing is, is tonight you're going to vote on giving away $1,000,000.1 from the hard-earned wages of the city residents who've paid for their electric bills, and they paid too much. And the only positive out of that is that you're not going to raise the rates for next year, according to this. I don't think you'd have the cojones to raise the rates, but first give away money and then raise the rates. But you never know what North St. Paul would do. I would suggest issuing, you know, there are walls checks when they took too much money at the state. I'd suggest Mungy checks to give this money back rather than sending it off somewhere else. Especially since the biggest payers are probably the churches in the city and the schools. So most of the money came from there, and I think they could use that money a lot better than we could use it. But there's not a chance in you-know-where that that will happen. And in trying to understand, which is, if you're not an accountant, with all this budget information that you submit for us to look at, we have one item here for the electric fund that said there was a change in position. Now, what's a change in position? What was the position? And what was, what is the new position? Is that really a fund balance? What is that? Is that a government thing? And then I look into today, into the resolutions, and it has the same figures for the electric fund, and it says revenues, expenditures, and a fund balance. And our fund balance is a negative $1,106,148. Well, at least you don't have to have an armed guard on something to hold, that holds money. It's probably in a drawer. It's probably in a drawer somewhere that says, "I owe you." Can't you get these things straight?
We look into that changed position, just to get an idea. Thank you very much, John. Scott, please.
State your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Qualley. I'm your building official, at least for the next 15 days or so. I sent you all an email a couple weeks ago. I sent another one today. There are some things that I, I think you need to know about the process that I was disappointed with. I'll put it that way. I don't believe that you were given the proper, unbiased, rational information you needed to make an informed decision about selecting your building official. So far in 2023, the city of North St. Paul has collected $656,234 in building permit revenue, excluding the technology fee and state surcharges. So that's money that was paid here, and some of that was paid to us, and some of that was retained by the city. If we annualize that, it's a little bit more, $715,000 if we divide it by 11, multiply it by 12 to get a full year, a guess at a full year number. That number is a big deal, and it's not the kind of thing that, you know, it's not like changing batteries, right? This is a big deal. It's going to affect four or five people, their gainful employment and other things. And I'm not here about sour grapes, about the fact you picked them over us. I'm here more about the process and what you don't know about what you did. There are two areas regarding fees that need to be discussed. And frequently, cities and city councils will confuse those. They will talk about the fees that we charge and the fees that you charge. And I just need to make it completely clear that the city's fee schedule is the city's fee schedule. And what I charge you under our contract is a relationship that we have in that contract. And if you make your fee $2, I'm going to get 75% of that $2. That's the way it works. So just to be clear, your fee schedule, it's not my fee schedule, not Rum River's fee schedule. Despite what may have been represented in the discussions leading up to, leading up to the decision to change vendors, your fees are going up. I was, watched the meeting after I left. I didn't realize you were going to talk about the fee schedule later. It was in staff discussion or whatever. In some cases, they're going to go way up, as much as 272% over what they are currently. There are fees that are $62 now that are going to go to $170. That's to change out a water heater, to have a new furnace put in. That's what's on the fee schedule that's in front of you tonight. The change in the fee schedule will cost your constituents at least $36,482 in additional permit fees based on last year's activity with the new fee schedule applied to it. This would result in $182,412 in additional fees charged to residents over the next five years. We talk about the community center not having enough money, and when I was here two weeks ago, it was the truth and taxation hearing. And money is an important factor in decisions that are made. I don't believe that we offer any different services than Rum River does. So it's not about, are we better, are we worse? In this case, I believe you have to kind of almost choose as if we're a commodity, and who's offering the better consideration to the city and to the residents of the city. The second piece of the fee component is the contract or proposal. The, the, what we're charging you. And in our last contract, we offered a 5% discount for a five-year contract, and I offered the same thing this year. So instead of 75, we offered 70%. That difference between what we proposed and what was proposed by Rum River is either 5 or 15% less than that, than they're going to charge.
Sorry, it's been past three minutes.
My three minutes?
Wrap it up. Yeah, sorry, that's what that was for, but we can.
So that difference is $41,000 a year, $208,000 over five years. $391,000 if you put the two of them together over five years in just raw dollars with the fee schedule you're about to adopt and the contract that you signed on to in the, at the previous meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie Blisse, please.
I'm Carrie Blisse. I live at 2887 Lake Boulevard in North St. Paul. And I'm here to, once again, to say thank you to Councilmember Norby, Councilmember Wong, Councilmember Schwer, Councilmember Cole, and Mayor Mungy. As a North St. Paul resident, this is, you guys have a hard job to represent us as your constituents and to make those hard decisions day in and day out, giving your time. You get a stipend, it's not that much, I know. But I really appreciate you guys, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. We'll wrap up the public hearing at 6:48? Or the, yeah, not public hearing. What is it? Public, yeah. Open to public. There we go. It's back now. Oh, thank you. Anyone online? Thank you. Okay. Brian?
All right. Public hearing, 2024 municipal fee schedule and rates, ordinance 824. Turn that over to Brandy.
The public meeting?
Open the public meeting, sorry, yeah.
Open the public meeting at 6:49.
The city council establishes a fee and rate schedule for permits, licenses, and services provided by the city. Staff review the fees and charges for services annually and makes recommendations for adjustments as necessary. The city council considered amendments to the fee schedule at the November 21st and December 5th meetings. The proposed amendments to the fee schedule include those that were reviewed and agreed upon, specifically with relationship to the park pavilion rentals that were discussed at the last council meeting, as well as the other amendments that were proposed. The fee schedule has been advertised for public hearing tonight. It is proposed that the city council adopt the fee schedule and utility rate schedule with increases as proposed.
Thank you. Any question? Not, move to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, you did open, do you want to?
Close it first.
Do you want to just make one more call for the public hearing? I understand the likelihood of that, but just to make it clear that it's open and then close it.
Public hearing is open. If not, we'll close it at 6:50. Anybody? Okay. Call for motion?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Schwer, second, anybody?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I almost did my own closing there for a second there. Get myself involved. Thank you. All right, let's close. Let me move on to business.
City business action items and recommendations. First up, item A, 2024 budget and levy overview, which will cover adopt resolutions for 2024 final general fund budget and levy, adopt resolution for 2024 final HRA levy and adopt the resolution for 2024 final EDA levy. We have Mr. Winnick here, Finance Director.
Thank you, Dan. Come on.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much. Tonight, we approve budgets and levies. And so kind of want to give kind of a, just a high-level view. I didn't prepare a presentation since we've had so many of them as through this year. But on item A and on item B, all of the budgets, even all the way down to the line item, all the narratives, everything is showing true transparency on the budget for 2024. The item A is, is the general fund and the levy budgets. And then item B is to adopt the non-levy budgets, which would include our enterprise, internal service funds, special revenue funds. Just kind of a high-level kind of look at it. From a levy perspective, the general city business, general levy is going to go up 8.5%. The city component to that is 6%. There's a debt service component to it. And if you remember, there's, you know, 2.5%, 2% going to streets and a half a percent, approximately a half a percent that will be going over to the park fund. The levy is increasing 557,000 dollars from, from 600, 6.5, approximately 6.5 million to 7.1 million. The HRA levy is increasing 11,000 dollars and the EDA is staying the same as it was in 2023. That's the levy components. And the non-levy components in the enterprise funds, the budgets that are presented in front of you represent and was just part of the rate increases. Wastewater and surface water will go up 4%. All the other remaining ones will stay the same. And then there's a, the transfer of the 1.1 million dollars from the electric fund into the street maintenance fund. What shows on the levies that was brought up earlier this evening in the public forum part to it of showing the fund balance for the electric being negative of approximately the 1.1 million, that's on an annual basis. That's what we're, what you will be approving today, the revenues and the expenditures. So of course, if you're transferring 1.1 million dollars, you're going to show a negative in your fund balance. Does not mean that the fund balance from the electric fund is negative 1.1 million dollars. I'll guarantee you, it's not. So we're doing perfectly fine on that standpoint. And so I'll, I'll entertain any questions on item number A right now regarding the general fund and the levy and the budget, the HRA budget and levy and the EDA budget and levy. And after we've gone through all the questions, there's three resolutions that will need to be approved.
Thank you. Appreciate the, any questions from anybody? Think we went through? Okay.
We've pretty much gone, yeah, gone through.
Yep, we're good.
So the, and just as a reminder, the only change that happened from what we saw two weeks ago for the general fund was your decision to, you know, reduce the budget for health and safety and basically transfer that over to the insurance fund. So that is reflected in all of the numbers.
Thank you. So go ahead.
Yeah, one thing I would like to note, looking forward is, you know, focusing a little bit more equitably on how we distribute and allocate our funds. I would say that the process was really well done. I appreciated the level of engagement and involvement. And I think we have some work to do in terms of looking at all parts of the city.
Okay. Just go down the line, one, two, three?
Yeah, do we have to read the full complete or just the heading of that?
It's up to the council. You could, in my opinion, make one motion for all three resolutions, but you can certainly do them one at a time if that feels better to you.
Can I get a motion to adopt all three?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Nordby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item, item B is the, to adopt the 2024 city non-levy budgets. And in there, you'll see the proprietary or the enterprise funds and the governmental funds. And again, the significant change there, the two rate changes for wastewater and surface water of 4% increase and again, the transfer for electric of 1.1 million dollars. There is a resolution that is attached to this that also needs to be voted upon.
Can I get a motion to adopt the 2024 non-levy?
Do, we could ask questions for?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Certainly can.
Sorry.
Dan, I know you and I have talked about this before. I would just like to go on record where when we are doing our budget next year, I would greatly appreciate in, in the city council's review of that budget, you also give us the option just to review the repayment of that 1.1 by decreasing the 300,000 over a year schedule that you and I had talked about, just so we can evaluate to see if we can get that budget back on track for the three to five-year plan.
Yeah. To give you a little bit more information, yes, will definitely be a part of the discussion. In early part of 2024, and we, obviously, timing is everything. We can't bring it up today because we don't know all of the information at this point in time that some of the information is coming in. When, and some of the members were here back at that time. When we approved the street projects for the 2022, we went out for bonding. We also identified ARPA funds to be utilized. Those ARPA funds need to be spent in no later than the end of 2024. If you remember, as we've kind of gone through the 2022 projects, just because of coming out of the COVID time and inflation, prices were just crazy. If you remember on the Seventh Street project itself, the original scope of service for that project, when it went out for bid, was significantly higher than we ever had anticipated. It needed to be pared down and rebid. That bid itself came down to a significant reduction from what we were estimating. Bottom line to it is, we should spend all of our bond funds. I'm not anticipating that we're going to spend all of our ARPA funds on the 2022. If you remember, we were awarded approximately 1,350,000 dollars in ARPA funds. We're working with our engineer to try to get to the best final numbers that we can on, on all of the projects. Not all payments have been, have been submitted for payment at this point in time. That's kind of why we can't do this at this point in time. But it, with the ARPA funds having to be spent by 2024, one of the items that we're going to be bringing forward once we get all the information is that we're going to give options to the city council on to what, what do you want to do with whatever those savings are in the ARPA funds? And one of them can be to repay the electrical and one of them can be put into the street fund. One could be putting into the, the park fund and facility fund and so forth. I can't give you a definitive dollar amount at this point in time, but that item will be coming forth for discussion and then for city council approval in the early part of 2024. So we do not lose that ARPA money. So, just for, for your awareness. So again, I, I think, I have been very proud of the city council, the discussions we've had on the budget, staff from my own staff and Mary Kay in particular and all of the department heads. And I do love the public comment because it always makes us think and it always makes us look at different opportunities. So even though we've heard that 1.1 from a public comment over and over again, it hasn't been lost on anybody. We're always looking at ways to try to reduce the impact for our residents. So that item will be coming probably February, March of 2024, once we get the numbers solidified.
All right, thank you. Good?
Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else? All right.
Thank you, Dan.
So can I get a motion to?
Motion to approve?
Okay, Councilmember Nordby, second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Schwer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number C, to adopt the 2024, 2033 capital improvement plan. The city council discussed, the city council has been presenting the capital improvement plan a number of times through the 2024 budget process, the last time being October 23rd of 2023. In addition, on October 25th, Parks and Recreation Committee reviewed the CIP and approved with recommendation. They did have one change that they had asked for that we have made since what you saw on the October 23rd, which I will tell you all the changes that have been, been made to the plan. And then on November 2nd, it was brought in front of the planning commission and thereto it was approved and that complies with the 2040 comprehensive plan. From the CIP plan that you saw on October 23rd, community development had removed two items. There was an item on there that was to be funded in 2024 in the amount of $60,000 for the Sepulveda Boulevard conversion design plan. And then also one that was to be funded in 2033 of $56,000 for the downtown parking and green space. Part of our discussion on the 23rd, there was an indication to move for the police department, police garage doors from 2025 to 2024 in the amount of $195,000. That's being reflected here on the CIP that's presented in front of you. And then street maintenance removed an item that was on the plan to be funded in 2031 and $29,200 for the old medical center parking lot. And then the final change that was made was a recommendation that came from the Parks and Recreation Committee and where we had a funding source in 2024 to be coming from park dedication funds. They would like to see that come from the park fund instead of the park dedication funds. We've accommodated that within our plan. Those are the only changes from the time that you saw it on October 23rd. So if there's any questions, certainly we'll take those.
Dan, please forgive me as a new council member. I don't know the right way to do this. But I just got a text from a resident that apparently our streaming stopped and I just wanted to make Carrie aware.
Oh.
So sorry for the interruption, Dan. No questions.
No problem, no problem.
Thanks for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Try to get back on. Good. Anybody else? Point to board. Thank you.
I have a couple.
Sure.
That I'd like to talk about, particularly for this year. I know we moved up the roll top garage at $195,000 and a camera trailer, if I'm, if that's still on there.
The camera trailer, we haven't made any adjustments since what was on the presented and discussed on October 23rd.
Okay, so, sorry?
So that one hadn't been changed since that timeframe. The garage door was changed, yes.
Correct, yep. Yep, so I'm just referring to those two items on the CIP. And frankly, I think that is kind of a lot of money when we are looking at $195,000 for a garage where when we look at the CIP in the long run, we're looking at a 10-year plan. We have an architecture study coming. We have other types of planning. And so I think this is a little bit cart before the horse. We don't know how that architecture might change the whole building or that part of the building, if that makes sense. The other part of it is I think that we can also save more money if we just do a commercial garage. And then as for the camera trailer, I think it goes back to the, what is, what is a broader strategic plan? And what is the plan of how, how to apply these? Are, are there reasons around needing a camera trailer now versus, you know, down the road? That, that wasn't clear to me, that, that component. So there's just different components that are, seem a little bit disjointed. And so that's why I'm pulling those two items for discussion to remove from the 2024 CIP.
I need some guidance here.
Mind if I jump in?
That's why, I need guidance.
Actually, I agree with you on the garage doors too. I mean, I don't know how those got pushed up front. We haven't gotten bids yet on any local contractors that can do that work as well. I think there would be significant savings off of something like that. I know it was brought up about the speed of the doors, but we've already had some damage to the doors now that.
Slower speed?
Or slower speed. But I think there's just some things worth looking into. I would imagine even home garage door openers, if you go from a half to a three-quarter horse, it goes faster, it opens the door faster as well. So I think there's other options to look at before you jump to something like that. That's my opinion.
Question is the panels, any panels that have been damaged or they've been replaced? Are we dealing with broken?
They're ordered at this point, yes.
ETA on those?
Uh, no, they, it's a, unfortunately, a company, it's out of Canada. It's taken a while to get them and because it's through Canada, it's considerably more expensive.
Is that the one for the fire department or the police department specific?
PD, correct.
The one up front, the fire is busted too.
Correct, yep.
All right, we have a couple. Same Canadian, same Canadian form? How do we go about if we don't get an ETA? I mean, I mean, the door is workable, because I'm sure you started with that first.
It just slows the time down. And I think that's why we push it up was because it slows the time down in them getting out of a garage. And that's, it's the specific, if you're facing the garage, I want to say it's the left side of it. There's a panel and that's the last panel that they had. They, they rigged it, is what I understand.
And that affects the speed of the garage door.
Correct.
And I already gave Phil the go-ahead to get that panel replaced. So that's what's on ordered for that, but, you know.
We don't have an ETA?
Uh, he did not tell me the ETA. I can get that information for you though.
We do have it ordered.
It is ordered.
So we're getting it fixed, it's just hasn't, we just don't have a time for him yet.
Correct.
And it is working?
It is.
So for me, I am fine with leaving both items in the CIP. And the reason for that is nothing can be acted upon until it comes in front of council for approval again anyways. So just because the speedy doors in the CIP doesn't necessarily mean we would approve it when presented. So I'm comfortable leaving, leaving it in there just so that we have funding, there's, so there's funding set aside so that when the outcome comes and if it's considerably less, we've still accounted for it as opposed to pulling it completely.
Or if we don't get the panel, it gets lost and doesn't come, we have other options then. Because we're going to have to replace that door brand, no matter what we do, it may not be the certain kind. Okay? I agree with that.
I do appreciate your perspective, Councilmember Wong, with the architectural study and pulling that. So thanks for bringing it to everyone's attention.
Any, on your side? Any on your side?
Just wanted confirmation from Brian or Dan that what Councilmember Cole said was correct is leaving it in there doesn't tire hands to anything future discussion is available for both items?
Yes. Can we bring forward more than one quote too for different options?
No.
No, wait.
No, because the, the resolution, and we had this last year and this year, when you pass the resolution, you're adopting and approves the 20, the capital improvement plan. And then also you're authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into agreements and execute change orders and amendments to agreements in accordance with the city's purchasing policies and procedures, provided the amounts are within the budget of the specific project and have been identified in the approved budget. So in other words, it will not have to go back and for, front of city council to be approved. So if you want to leave those two items within the budget, you can make a friendly amendment to this resolution requiring those two items to come back to city council for approval.
For me, thank you for clarity. Thank you for, thank you for asking. It was a misinterpretation of my part. I would like for them to come back in front of council. That's, you know, keep it in there from a planning purpose, but I think there's different alternatives and there's different options.
Absolutely.
That's a friendly amendment. Lisa?
Yeah, I think in my mind, I see that, that kind of funding that could be elevated, allocated or invested in our community center or other spaces and places. And I don't think that, again, that the budget was as equitable as it could be. And so I'm thinking that if we can operate, you know, even a community center for a few months or even a small amount of time, that's way below, you know, this cost even. And so that's just kind of where I'm coming from is the trade-off.
So we have two.
All right, lawyer.
Sorry.
Turn on your mic.
Well, so we have a motion with a friendly amended, remind me if that was seconded.
I don't believe it was.
So as we sit here right now, you have nothing until you have a second on that.
Correct. I didn't know we even did a first one on that one yet, did we? We didn't.
I thought Jason did with the second, with the friendly.
I thought Tim did. So, okay.
Well, so we have nothing on the table.
Correct, yes.
I make a friendly amendment.
Well, actually, if no one's made a motion, we need a motion.
Okay.
Is that back to me?
To you.
Whoever.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the friendly amendment to the two items that were in question, that come back in front of council before any financial spending is done on either of the items.
Yeah.
And just to be. For approval and discussion.
And that's actually the motion. You would perhaps, sometimes you can get loose with Robert's rules and have a friendly amendment once there's a motion on the table. But actually, the, the motion is to adopt staff recommendation with those two modifications.
Okay.
And Dan, are you clear on the two modifications?
Um, yes. Just a clarification, the city council, that I have not, you know, misinterpreted this, it would be that the two items that would be required to come back in front of city council to be approved before anything could be, any legal obligation could be created would be the police garage doors in the amount of $195,000 and the trailer camera in the amount of $55,000.
Is that your motion?
That's your motion, Tim?
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Schwerer, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay. Thank you. You're done? Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Good job.
Dan, Mary Kay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to June again. You got, Mary Kay, you got six months off.
Yeah.
Well, that's after the auditors are done.
On behalf of the Finance Department, would like to wish all of you a very, very happy holiday and look forward to seeing you next year. I will still be here, but.
So are we? It's not an election year.
No, I meant it, I meant it from the start, but I'll be working, I'll be working through that time. You won't be reconvening until January, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item D, resolution to deny a variance to the sign ordinance. I'll turn that over to Brandy Howard, Community Development Director.
The Planning Commission held a public hearing and considered a signed variance request from the American Legion on November 2nd of 2023. That variance request was to allow the placement of an electronic message center sign on the building wall at 2678 Seventh Avenue, the Legion, which is prohibited by the sign ordinance. Under our current ordinance, electronic message center signs may only be placed on a freestanding sign structure. After considering the applicant's testimony and the findings of fact of the request, the Planning Commission concluded that they could not grant a variance to the applicant because the request did not meet the criteria for variances per the municipal code, specifically that economic hardship cannot be used to constitute justification for a variance request. At that same meeting, this leads us into the item E on the agenda, the Planning Commission considered alternative paths to allow that request to go forward by the planning, I'm sorry, by the American Legion. In their discussion, it was decided that the sign ordinance is too restrictive regarding electronic message center signs, and they directed staff to prepare an amendment to the sign ordinance that would allow them to be placed on, on buildings as wall signs. The proposed sign ordinance, as I mentioned, is item E, it's next on the agenda, is a simple amendment that eliminates the restriction that EMCs only be permitted on a freestanding sign. In addition, that amendment creates a, a new section of the sign quote, code that establishes clear direction for the procedure to amend the sign ordinance, which prior to this amendment is not included in the ordinance. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the resolution to deny the variance and to approve the resolution amending the sign ordinance.
And that gets to sign up on the Legion, right?
It does.
Mm-hmm. And we have to vote yea to deny it.
Um, just, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Just as a point of clarification, because my significant other does work at the American Legion, I wanted to ask for clarification whether I'm allowed to vote on the denial of the variance.
So it's a good disclosure and I do feel like it's important that everyone understands, you know, the full scope of these things. I do feel like Councilmember Norby can vote on this particular item. There are instances when people would be disqualified based on relationships and land use applications. This one is far enough down the line where I don't feel like that exists. You can always err on the side of caution and recuse yourself, but I do not feel like you have a, a conflict of interest on this particular application. So if you choose to vote, I think that's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the clarification. All right. Can I get a motion to, resolution to deny the variance to the sign ordinance? So moved, Your Honor? So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody? Okay. Thank you.
Now, let her eat.
Mm-hmm. Now we got to consider. So you're going to go through that, then? Oh, we're just going to go right straight through. All right. All right. E, can I get a motion to consider?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Cole, second. Councilmember Schwerer, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Against? Thank you.
Is item F, consideration of an amendment to the zoning ordinance related to assistant living arrangements.
The Planning Commission held a public hearing and considered an amendment to the zoning ordinance at its December 7th meeting that modifies the land use table to allow assisted living arrangements serving six or fewer persons and daycare facilities serving 12 or fewer persons as a by right land use in all residential districts. Similar facilities serving greater than seven and 12 persons respectively may be permitted with a conditional use permit. The modification aligns with state statute that preempts local authority to prohibit these uses in residential zoning districts. The draft ordinance that is presented in the packet was prepared by the city attorney's office. Staff recommends that the city council approve the ordinance to amend Table 3 in the zoning ordinance as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I was at the Planning Commission when this was discussed. This is basically to get our city laws in line with state laws. So to, to me, it makes absolute sense of why we're doing this.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Wong, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nay? Thank you. Got one more?
One more. Item G is bringing down from the consent agenda for the Burwell property conveyance. Turn that over to you, Lisa.
Yeah, so. So one of my concerns here is that we don't necessarily have a value for that piece of land. I understand that it's kind of a unique piece of land and it's landlocked. However, we've had a discussion about knowing the value of our land in other situations and I don't think that this is any different. So I, I would really like to have that value before making a decision. Does that make sense? Questions? I'm open to talking about it.
Oh, yeah. I was going to. I, I did some research. I was looking at that too because I was the one with, that said we need to have evaluation. So I talked to a few of the, the mayors and I also talked to some real estate agents, real estate lawyers when it comes to a land where you can't have access to it as far as there's no way to get to that land because you can't, and I was there today. This is the map I received. I was down there at Burwell, so I wanted to take a look because I wanted to make sure what the property looked like. So when I look at this map and the map that was in there, it shows Sepulveda's a real street. So that's what really confused me because Sepulveda ends like right into his garage doors and then it was abandoned and given to the landowners all the way down the rest of the way. So that's the land of the people we have as far as that owned the land before. This one here was back in the, it was a spur for the, for the railroad. So it was maintained and taken care of by the people that used it. And then the other locations, when I did some research, for the other spurs were given back to the people that already had the land around it. So to me, when I look at it, you can't get to it without a, without a variance from somebody to get access. And it's been used as their land. We didn't know about it until just a few years ago. It was one of those things where it was, it was overlooked. So I talked to a half dozen mayors. I talked, talked to the city of Oakdale Mayor. They had the same thing down in Tanner's, by Tanner's Lake down there was an alley between that they never used that was a city-owned alley. And a gentleman went to go sell it and there was, his shed was on it and he didn't find out there was an alley there. So, and there was like two of them actually on that spot. So two different people that had it. So the city did a quick claim. They had the people that owned the land. In fact, that was a little bit different because the ones with the sheds. So they agreed that the land would go to them. They start paying taxes on it. It's part of their lot. City of Maplewood, they did the same thing right around Lake Phalen where that trailers used to be, where they had that campground trailer place. There was a path around there and when they did the senior building, it was just a easement that was there that wasn't being used. So that was absorbed into the, as far as the city gave it to the project as well. So, and I also have the same thing from the mayor of, the former mayor of, of Lakeville that when it comes to these lands and cleaning up boundaries, it's mess. It's, it's a long time ago. Our city's 1887. There was a lot of different places. As far as, you know, cleaning up spots, we have streets that were abandoned like Sepulveda down there. And so to me, there really isn't a value, the way I look at it, it's maybe, you know, a fee type of thing to transfer, but, but there's no way to get to it without using somebody else's land. So, and what I talked to Ghost Realty and they said that land value would be zero because there's no way to get to it. So.
I guess like my, my concern about it is that it's not documented. And I think that's really important, you know, that say we get an appraisal, if it says $0, it says $0, but we know what the value is and we can justify to the residents why we gave it away for a dollar because it didn't have as much value. So again, it's, it's still land and it still needs to go through, in my opinion, a vetting process, basic appraisal, try to understand the value of the land and then, yeah, I think go from there. But I, I do think that this, this just isn't enough documentation around it.
Okay. Well, so what are we voting? Anybody else have any questions or any concerns?
Do you want to put it up to a vote?
Mm-hmm. If nobody else has anything. Want to read it?
So it would be for the Burwell property conveyance of that said property, that 50-foot wide strip to, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but.
Seven.
Conveyance to Burwell's.
Are you going to slide it up? Want me to do it?
Yeah, please, would you?
Sure. Hold on one second. The old mouse working. Property con, conveyance? Sorry. Burwell property conveyance.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, to be clear, I think there are another parcel in there too with the Forestwood Holdings is in the resolution.
The north half, if you will, one half of that 50-foot strip would then go to that company, yes.
So the two companies that.
Correct, yes.
They split it up. So alls I have there is Burwell property. What do I got to, what do we vote on?
The, the resolution explains that the, does talk about both parcels, in my opinion.
Okay. Can you, where are we going to read that at?
Where is that?
Is it down at the bottom of the, the paper on it? I don't know what you, what I'm supposed to say.
So there's a, there's a resolution in your packet.
Yep.
It does, the resolution number is not assigned yet, but it simply is a, a resolution approving conveyance of real property. Contained in the resolution is what I would call the transfer of the city formerly right-ofway slash street. Part of it is going to Burwell and part of it is going to Forestwood Holdings and that resolution outlines that. So if there is a motion to adopt the resolution in the packet, I believe that covers it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution in the packet?
Before we motion, I want to make it clear that we have talked about property and land property and city-owned property in the past and making sure that we have identified the cost of it and that we're not contradicting what we're doing because we have made it a point to appraise areas and we should continue to make sure that it is appraised and that we're following our proper protocol. So I stand with Councilmember Wong. We, my understanding is that we, we understand that obviously it's, we can't get to it. I mean, it's, it's land that we technically.
Just passing to get to, yep.
Correct. We're just passing it.
Maintained it forever, yep.
But as we're motioning this and sitting up here and representing the city, it's important that we continue to follow what we are asking to do, what we're being, what we're supposed to be doing here is identifying the cost of the properties and with everybody involved. So it's important as council members, elected officials, that we follow through with what we say and we do that. And I agree with Councilmember Wong by identifying these areas and I understand that it's, it's a pass-by moving forward. I, I think it's important that maybe we all identify what's happening in the city and where there are pass-bys. And if this is going to be at a cost of $0, we need to identify those areas in the city and reconsider that.
I think Brian looked and he says the one, all the other ones that had spurs went to the people that were.
The properties that it went through, correct.
They weren't, had never put in the city name, correct. Do we have a PID for this property even?
Yes, the PIDs are listed in the resolution.
So both of those do have, because I know when we, on some of the information we were looking, we were called Ramsey County and they had no idea about it. So has that been cleared up?
Which is not uncommon. The, the county on city-owned land, especially these kind of orphaned parcels, if you will, there's not a lot of time put in to go value them. You know, and one thing I would just, and not to get into the weeds or get overly granular about it, but what the state statutes talk about is when you acquire something via an easement, there is a. Which is not uncommon. The county on city-owned land, especially these kind of orphan parcels, if you will, there's not a lot of time put in to go value them. You know, and one thing I would just, and not to get into the weeds or get overly granular about it, but what the state statutes talk about is when you acquire something via an easement, there is a direct statutory process whereby you can vacate that, and the land does just go back to the surrounding property owners there. You don't assign it to someone. You just vacate it, and actually the county reassigns it. And the idea behind that is, you know, when you do a subdivision and you require a landowner as part of their development process to give you an easement as part of that, the city is extracting that land from them. And you're extracting it because there's a valid public purpose, such as a road, a drainage, or utility easement. And so what that statute says is, well, if you took it for a public purpose, and you ultimately make a finding or decide there is no public purpose, it's not, it's not here for you to profit on. It is here for you to turn back over to whoever you took it, or whoever the then owner is. And it's a very nice, straightforward statutory process. In my opinion, that process only works for easements. It does not work when you actually own the dirt. And here, it's a little different because you have acquired the land, not via easement, but in fee. And so that's, that's the discussion of, does it have value? I'm not here, I'm not a real estate appraiser. I'm not here to tell you whether it does or doesn't. It is, I understand the arguments of landlocked. There's no doubt that impacts the value. There's no doubt that when you look at this fairly, it should be sent back to exactly who the resolution is contemplating. I think to the point that's before the council, and what you're discussing and debating is the absolute right discussion to have. Do you think it has value, and what's the process to determine that? So I think, I think you're having the right discussion right now.
So it was a railroad. It started out as that. How did the city get it when they didn't get the other ones? Do, we have no idea on that, so.
I did not pull the historical twos and fro's on this. I know that it was conveyed in 1887.
And, I mean, part of it is, you know, he has a building that's partway on it. Nobody knew it was his. So that's kind of concerning to me.
Yeah, there's no doubt that it, that it should go back. The city isn't using it. He is. To me, the discussion is, is there a value associated with this land? There's, I, it isn't, should we sell it to someone else, in my opinion?
No.
That isn't fair. That isn't right. And that's not what we're trying to do. The question becomes, does a landlocked parcel still have some form of value? Because as a city asset, the discussion is, is there a fair market value on it? And if, and again, I think Councilmember Wong touched on it, if there's documentation or due diligence to say zero, then you can rely on that. That's certainly a fair, fair way to go. And you've mentioned some, some, some things you've looked at, you've talked to. I think Timberghost was at least one of the property owners, Realtor, who said on his behalf, yeah, I think it's worth nothing. So that's, that to me is the discussion for you folks to have in terms of whether that land has any value. One thing I would note, not to complicate matters, is when you give away or sell or dispose of land, it is something that the Planning Commission oftentimes will weigh in on. You can choose to waive that requirement, but that takes a two-thirds vote. So contained in this resolution is that you would waive the Planning Commission review, but that would take a two-thirds slash four out of five votes to waive that review. If there's discussion on, hey, maybe we want more background on this, I don't know if it's necessary to deny the resolution. We could simply hold it over and, you know, get whatever information it takes to make folks comfortable that we have the correct value associated with it. So that would be some thoughts on a path forward.
It would be my opinion that we table it for tonight. I have full respect for what Councilmember Wong asked for. I think that we should spend the money and have, have the property evaluated and find out what, what the property is truly worth. It is, again, of my opinion that it will not change the outcome as to how I vote. I still support giving the, giving the property back to where it is, but I truly believe that we should probably, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is a little bit closer.
That's why I brought it up, because like I said, I've been the first one to talk about properties, but just doing some research too is, and I want to be, you know, fair to somebody who didn't even know it was done after, you know, since a couple of years ago, that it was, that it was even on it.
Councilmember Cole, just for sake of clarification, moving forward, the, you know, whatever it is, the, you know, we can get an appraisal, we can get a limited appraisal, we can talk to folks on that. You know, talking to a Realtor and having them give you something can usually be done free. Appraisals aren't. Is there a thought on where that appraisal gets, who pays for the appraisal?
As stated before, I'm, my decision's made. So it's, if we can, if we can do it for no funding, I'm fully supportive of, we gain that. But I'm one of five.
Yeah. My wife's a Realtor and her company, you know, she, we asked around too as far as that. So, I mean, I was trying to do my due diligence on that part of it. So, but I agree with, if we can do, that's why I didn't bring hers up, because she's, you know, we're husband and wife, but I think if we could, you know, find, the other one was a $5,600 or something. It was in the packet about how much that, there was something there, and that was $5,600 for, that was a lot more money than the, I think, the appraisal for the other one. That's the full appraisal. There was a $5,600 in there, wasn't there? Thought I saw that down there somewhere. Did I see that? Maybe it was in the notes. I had a bunch of emails I printed off too. Yeah, this is a sheet that was a synopsis. So appraisal approximately $5,600.
Well, it's something staff can talk to the property owners on, try and figure something out that would bring back the information the council needs to make a decision. And Brian, as a manager, has a level of discretion and authority in terms of spending or, you know, negotiation on this. And if we feel like we need further direction, we can certainly bring it back to you at your next meeting, seeking that. But in the meantime, if there's a motion to table it, we can do that and come back with any, hopefully come back with the information necessary.
Do I have a motion to table?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved. Councilmember Wong, second.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you.
All right, next up, reports from city manager and departments. Former staff meeting today. Fire department is continuing on with their training. They're doing multifamily housing permits. And this year, they're going to have another record for the number of call-outs that they've had. They're currently at 1,632 calls. Kerry's doing a lot of work in our fee schedule and updating software. Public Works doing some tree trimming and cleanup at Southwood Park. We had two more applications for the mechanic position, which is great. So we'll be doing those interviews later this week. Finance is certifying delinquent utilities and getting ready for the auditors to show up. PD had shop with the Cobb. They actually pulled some of their own money to get some of the gifts for those people. They had 14 kids there that they took care of, and the food shelf gave each family 100 pounds worth of food, so it was great.
Cool.
Yeah. And they were also picked for a post-audit, which is, just looks at all their training, make sure everybody's up to speed on that. So he's dealing with that right now. One more item. We have, just wanted to remind you, we're having a crane set up on Sepulveda Boulevard, and this is for setting the pre-constructed concrete floors for that building. Lily Project will have the crane installed on Sepulveda beginning December 26th. Of course, that's weather permitting. Sepulveda will be closed at Helen Street, and traffic detoured around the project. They anticipate the crane will be in place for eight working days. After work's completed, they'll, on Sepulveda, the crane will be moved to Seventh Avenue on January 8th. Seventh Avenue will be reduced to one lane of eastbound traffic through the construction zone, and the westbound lane closed for approximately eight working days. The next phase of the project will move the crane along the project site with additional lane closures and detours posted on Seventh Avenue. And those signs, I think, probably started going up today. And I hope everybody has a happy and healthy holiday. That's it.
Reports, council and commission committees. Councilmember Norby?
The, we voted on a bunch of stuff that was from the last Planning Commission. The next Planning Commission is on January 4th, happens to be my birthday. We have the Planning Commission Chair in the audience today. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
As for the Arts and Culture Commission, I believe that they'll be presenting their kind of a year in review in January, so look out for that. We still have a call for artists currently for Project Snowy. And we have an open seat for a youth commissioner still, so looking for that individual. Let's see. And then our next meeting is the first Wednesday in the new year, and the chamber's at 6:30.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwer.
The Parks and Recreation meeting will not take place this month. I, we have a new member that we will acknowledge next month, and our next meeting is January 24th at 6:30 in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
December 8th meeting was not held, it was canceled. The next EDA meeting is January the 9th, 3 o'clock here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. General Business, Councilmember Norby?
Just would like to wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy new year.
I would like to go back to the Arts and Culture Commission really quickly, and a big thank you to Stacy Maher. She won't be renewing her term, but with us, however, a lot of gratitude for her in terms of just getting the whole Arts and Culture Commission up and going. So a big, a lot of heavy lifting in those foundational days, so a lot of appreciation for her. As for General Business, I attended the staff event, and a big congratulations to those who have anniversaries. And it was a really great event, wonderful display of cookies, and it just seemed like staff were engaged and present and having a good time. So thank you for, for having us there. And then just a big thank you to staff. There's been a lot of work done this year, and so I greatly appreciate all of that, and I hope that you have a restful winter and holiday season, and we'll see y'all next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwer. Schwer, I said.
I want to give my sincere condolences to Mr. Anderson's family. I had the pleasure of meeting Paul this past year at a couple of the history events, and that man is a true gem of the city. He is, he was a wealth of knowledge, deserves the proclamation this Thursday. My sincere condolences not only to the Anderson family, but everybody that is suffering the loss of him, including the Historical Society. Again, kudos, and thank you all to the city staff. This goes for everybody. You guys had a lot of work cut out for you this year. It's been a great year. I've had the pleasure of working with you for my first year, and I truly feel blessed to be walking alongside you for the next three. I also want to thank everybody for my first year of service. It's been great, challenging, but a lot of fun. I look forward to working with everyone in 2024. I want to welcome everyone's concerns, excitement, and I encourage every single resident to attend these council meetings. Your voice is heard. We hear you. Please continue to voice your concerns and positive accolades. Other than that, I wish every single person, employees, council members, residents, a happy holidays and safe new year.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
Joyce is going last.
I'm last.
That's right. You're right.
I'm batting cleanup, pal.
I want to echo everything Councilmember Schwer said about the Anderson, the Anderson family. It's tough. Yeah. A big call-out, again, it's been addressed by Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Schwer. Just thank you, staff. Thank you for everything that you do. You get at the short end of the stick sometimes. We might not always be friendly and happy up here. So thank you for everything. I greatly appreciate everything that's being done. One other note that I had is I had the opportunity to attend the North St. Paul Business Association fundraiser for the North St. Paul Police Foundation, held last week at, at the American Legion. I just want to say it was a great turnout, and I want to thank the Legion for hosting. That's it for me. You're last.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year.
Yes.
Have a great holiday.
Appreciate it.
Books closed.
Nice. Close for the year. I want to thanks, I was, went to the holiday, the holiday party for the, and the awards ceremony for the city. It was great to be able to talk to everybody, walk around. It was a really good event. Reminder that I wanted to bring out, as long as we have our lawyer here too, is we had a little confusion with, with our EDA. We sent out, we have our emails for the city. So, and some of them weren't checking them, and there were some meetings that they didn't see and things like that. So we just have to encourage everybody that's on commissions and on the council that we use the North St. Paul. That's for your safety as far as any kind of data or anything like that. So I really want to, because they, they didn't look at that, and there were some issues with the meeting. So that was part of the EDA being canceled, was just not the, not the correct email. So as the city, we use our North St. Paul email. That's all we communicate with. So it keeps the, the data and everything separate from that as well. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And I want to ask the young man in the back what he's doing here tonight. Is it a study? Come on up. I'm very curious.
By the way, there's a youth spot open on the Arts and Culture.
Welcome. What's your name?
I'm Tyler Shaw. I'm a resident in North St. Paul, and I'm a Boy Scout here, working on my Communications Mayor badge.
Awesome.
For Troop 9817 in Oakdale.
Oh, good for you. I'm glad you're here. What did you think of it? First time at a meeting?
Yeah, first time. It was lots of information.
Oh, good. Well, I'm glad you came. Thank you.
Do you want to run?
Move to North St. Paul.
I am.
Oh, I thought he said Oakdale. Oh, that's the troop. Troop, okay. Well, good. Well, I'm glad, glad you showed up, and it was, glad to have you back there.
How can we support you with your badge?
Yeah, what do you need?
Um, I just needed the different views on some different topics.
Did you pick some good ones?
Yeah.
Good.
Were they mine?
Wow, really?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Well, good. Well, I'm glad you came up, and I was glad to see you here. Thank you very much for joining us.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Well.
Yeah. Nicely done.
Nice kid back there. I really wanted to know who he was. Good. Well, thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everybody. And if I have a motion, adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember, boy, you're all quick when it comes to this adjourn motions, but everything else, you're pulling teeth. Councilmember Cole, second. Now we're, that a boy. Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody. Next meeting is...